I call this November 8, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in whose hands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Laura will have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Barlow. Commissioner Bradshaw.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Vice Chair Hassett.
Present.
Commissioner Hubbard.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Patillo.
Here.
Commissioner Alexander.
Here.
Commissioner Morris. And Chairman person Gillette.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And we'll have the automated announcement, please.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have 17 copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have 17 copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
Okay. Everyone was handed the Planning and Zoning minutes from the October the 11th meeting. I'll have a motion to approve if there are no questions.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Martin. All in favor say aye.
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 Item number one, staff report by Peggy Clements.
Item number one is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 40424221 from an AR agricultural residential zone to an RE 30M residential recreation, 30,000 square foot minimum lot size zone to bring the property into compliance in the Kanebids vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is here and wishes to speak.
Here for any questions to be asked.
Thank you. I have nobody who's requested to speak on this, so I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the commissioners if they have any questions for this applicant.
I have a quick question, it's probably not for applicant.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Number one, I just, so what, why did this parcel get tagged for out of compliance? Maybe the staff can help me understand how this comes about.
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Bradshaw, I'm not certain on this one in particular. The most common reason these types of things get brought up is when they come in to apply for permits, and we do a review at that point and determine that the property doesn't meet the zoning requirement, so they get turned down for their permit, and then they come through this process to bring that into compliance so they can move.
So can we get the applicant?
Commissioner Martin.
Applicant, can we ask them?
Would the applicant please come up to the podium? State your name and your address.
Can I interrupt for one second? We're not seeing anything on the online portion, we're just seeing the initial.
Ready?
Yes.
Name's Michael Barlow, the address is 2885 South 1920 East Kanebids, Arizona.
Thank you. Commissioner Martin?
What were you pulling the permits to do?
Please turn on your mic.
To pull the home.
And why is it not in compliance?
Because I am on just less shy of an acre, 0.94, and that is due to the road easement.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I will now call for a motion.
Motion to approve item one with staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Bradshaw. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Item number two, staff report by Amy Patsy.
Excuse me, Chairwoman, real fast, this is calling, Commissioner Patillo, you're not seeing the presentation online, we're just seeing the initial automated announcement where they talk about what to do if you want to speak.
I'm not sure that I know how that works.
Madam Chair, we'll send one of our staff members to IT to see, oh, here comes IT.
It is being fixed, so we will continue while that's going on. Amy Patsy.
Item number two is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2018-041 for a portion of assessor's parcel number 22135024 to move the condition that it is for a mineral, to remove the condition that it is for a mineral reclamation plant enclosed in a building only, and to allow an extension of time for the completion of improvements to allow for an energy facility in the Fort Mojave vicinity. Staff recommends approval of the amendment and extension of time.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing, is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak?
We are here, we're here for questions.
Okay, thank you. I have no one who's asked to speak, so I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if any of the commissioners have any questions.
Yes, I just, Chairman?
Commissioner Martin? Sir, could you come up to the podium, please, and give us your name and your address?
I'm John Martel, 1999 Arena Drive, Bullhead City, from Mojave Electric.
Thank you.
Thank you. My question is basically that this request is because of new ownership, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I have a couple of questions.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
So, so what couldn't be done in the timeline that was previously allocated to?
We weren't the previous owner, and as we, when we purchased it, we found out that the zoning had lapsed, so we weren't the owner before it was with the other plan they were going to do on it.
So, and then if we do allow this, so you're asking to have the reclamation outside of a building, so what does that look like? Are we going to have, is there water concerns, is there air quality concerns, noise concerns?
Yeah, so we're looking to build a quick start natural gas turbine there. The previous zoning was for a mineral reclamation inside a building, we're looking to do it for an energy facility to provide much-needed generation in the area. So it's not going to be a, it's not necessarily going to be any minerals or that type of reclamation at all.
Okay, so it's a completely different use then?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question. You say, you're not planning on making one of those solar things, right?
No, it'd be a quick start natural gas turbine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. I will call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve item two with staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hassett, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Was that an aye or no?
Delay.
Mine was a yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number three, Peggy Clements.
Item number three is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for assessor's parcel number 30648009C to allow for a 150-foot wireless communication facility in a C2H10A highway commercial 10-acre minimum lot size zone in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is here, and do you wish to speak?
Item three.
You're just here for questions?
Yeah, no.
Okay, I have no one who wants to speak, so come down to the podium, give us your name and your address.
Yes, good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Declan Murphy, representing Vertical Bridge Towers. Basically, would like to thank staff for their time and effort in processing the application. It's a pretty standard cell site, that it will be designed for multiple carriers, and so we'll have the structural and the utilities, fiber, et cetera, to accommodate as many carriers as in the market. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Martin? Alexander, sorry.
Yes, could you tell me if this is, would be a 5G tower?
Yes, Chairman, Commissioner Alexander, it will be at some point. I think it's interesting in terms of with 5G and moving forward, what the technology is doing and what's pertinent to this site and to rural Arizona is that with 5G, you have speeds up to a gigabyte. So what it means for rural broadband, I think, it really is the thing that's going to address rural broadband in that you'll be able to get 500 meg up to a gigabyte speed for, let's say, 50 bucks a month unlimited data. So for the first time, it is making broadband, or will make broadband available in rural areas comparable to what you would have in the big urban areas. So it is a kind of a game changer in that, for example, T-Mobile and Verizon are two that offer now this set-top box that you can put in your home and basically unlimited data for, like I say, 50, 60 bucks a month, which, you know, up to now, if you had to get that kind of speed or fiber, you'd be looking for a household, maybe, I don't know, $150, $200 a month. So I think it's a game changer with this type of infrastructure, that it's going to be a solution to rural broadband, if you like, and, you know, folks that live in rural areas will now be able to, you know, avail of the same speeds for whatever reason.
Thank you, sir.
So is that a yes?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. So I, in looking at the land here, it's basically sitting in the Sacramento Wash, but can you tell me how close the nearest residential neighbor is to that?
Yes, I think the nearest neighbor, if I recall, is to the southeast, and, you know, one of the things in choosing the location, obviously commercial property, and also we were looking to keep as far away from the nearest residential as possible, which I think we're about as far as we can be in that area.
And do you know how far that is?
I can look it up. If I recall, it's 400 feet, 500 feet.
400 feet, so those residents would not necessarily have been advised of this, would they? That question to the staff.
I would defer to staff, but I, yes, there was a sign posted, and, I don't know, I could say.
Madam Chair, to answer that question a little bit, when we notify for the special use permit, we notify 300 feet from the property line, and so, and its adjacent properties, the adjacent property does have, appears to have a home on it, and so they would have been notified of the special use permit for the tower. One of the other thing that we have, I believe in our ordinance, is it's 300 feet that they have to be from a tower as well. So any new tower would have to, when they come in for their permits, have to show that they're at least 300 feet from any existing residence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number four, Alex Bolin.
Item number four is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 30648012E from an AR 4A agricultural residential 4-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I have no one who has asked to speak, so I'm going to ask if the, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the, did you want to speak, sir?
You're the applicant.
Oh, you're the applicant. Do any commissioners have any questions at this time? Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Motion to approve item four with staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Martin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number five, staff report by Alex Bolin.
Item number five is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from a low-density residential land use designation to a general commercial land use designation, and a rezone of assessor's parcel number 30648012D from an AR 5A agricultural residential 5-acre minimum lot size zone to a CMO, commercial manufacturing, open lot storage zone, to allow for an outdoor storage facility in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing, and we have no one who wants to speak on this, so I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if any commissioners have any questions. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve item five with staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Bradshaw. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number six.
[inaudible].
Yes. And this says the applicant has requested a continuance for this item to the December 13th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
I make a motion to continue item six to the December 11th Planning and Zoning meeting.
Second.
I have a motion to extend this.
It's the 13th, I'm sorry.
No, it's, I apologize. I apologize, I put the 13th on your sheet, and it's the 11th is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
The 11th.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Opposed?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It looks like it is the 13th.
It is the 13th.
Looks like what?
Should be the 13th.
I apologize again, I'm looking at my December 2024 calendar, and then I looked at the, so it is the 13th. I'm okay almost, I apologize.
So this is going to be postponed until the December 13th meeting?
If she, if the item is amended.
I will amend the motion to be December 13th meeting.
We'll need a second, second for that.
I have, Commissioner Kelly has seconded.
Just throw a dart at.
So do we have two seconds? All right, Commissioner Hubbard?
Yeah, what's their reasoning for postponing it again?
This is their first time requesting a continuance on this item. We've had so many requests, I apologize that there was probably some confusion, but on this application, this is their first time. This is the Griffith Solar project on this.
Is this for a solar field?
We do have the applicant here available if you'd like to speak with them.
Yes.
Would the applicant please come to the podium and give us your name and your address,
Thank you so much, Chair, Commissioners Lindsay Shuby, I'm with the law firm of Gammage and Burnham, 40 North Central in Phoenix, Arizona. So thank you so much, we are requesting a continuance, in part because I just got retained at the end of last week. We feel really good about this presentation and this application, I believe that this distinguishes itself from other applications that are coming in front of you, but frankly, to be completely transparent, I had a girls' lacrosse tournament in Tucson this weekend, and I didn't want to work over the weekend, so I respectfully request, having new representation on the case in order to make the best argument we can for you at the Planning Commission, this is not, we're not trying to kick the can down the road or anything like that, I would just like an opportunity to be prepared and represent my client the best way possible, and also be a good mom this weekend, not work through the weekend and go to a lacrosse tournament. So respectfully request a continuance of one month, you will not get another continuance from us for not being ready to go, I commit to you, I will be here in December, December 13th, and present a good case, or the best case I can.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Barlow?
Not completely. It says solar facility. You planning on making a solar field out of this eventually?
Chair, Commissioner Hubbard, one reason why I need the continuance is I need to get totally up to speed. Griffith Energy has been in your community for a long time, an employer, and a good community member, there is an extension of solar, but in order for me to adequately answer your question, that's why I'm requesting the one-month continuance.
So it's going to be a solar field? I'm done.
Yeah.
Wait till it comes up.
It is up. All the continuation is up.
We're voting on a continuation of this item. Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have, I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Kelly to, for a continuance on this item. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item number seven is also a request for a continuance.
I make a motion to continue item seven to the December 13th meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved, this will be continued to the December meeting. Item number eight.
I have a question, I want to, were there any people from the public that came here to speak on those items?
No, no one filled out any application to speak, and we have decided that we're not going to just have people come up, they have to go back and follow the procedure. Okay, so where was I? Item number eight, staff report by Peggy Clements.
Item number eight is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan of assessor's parcel numbers 30505004, 30526012F, and 30526012G from a rural development area land use designation to a general commercial area land use designation, and a rezone of assessor's parcel number 30526012F from an AR 5A agricultural residential 5-acre minimum lot size zone to a C2H highway commercial zone to allow for an expansion of commercial development in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard condition.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask, is the applicant present? Do you wish to come to the podium? Your name and your address, please.
I'm on a grant for Mojave Engineering, and we represent the owners, Mark and Carol Lundgren, who are here today and available to answer any questions that the Commission may have of them. This is the Sky Dewey Arena, they're in Golden Valley, that they're hoping to expand, and of course, the location has become a landmark for local horse people.
Thank you. Any commissioners have any questions of this applicant? Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number nine, staff report, Peggy Clements.
Item number nine is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 12219023 from an AR 36 agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 20A agricultural residential 20-acre minimum lot size zone to bring the property into compliance. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions, and I'm sorry, this is in the Yucca vicinity.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is present, and do you wish to speak? Okay, are the commissioners have any questions for this applicant? I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Second the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Alexander. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item number 10, staff report, Amy Patsy.
Item number 10 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel numbers 32602120A, 120B, and 120C from an AR general zone to an AR, AR 2A agricultural residential 2-acre minimum lot size, and an AR agricultural residential zone.
2-acre minimum lot size and an AR agricultural residential zone to bring the property into compliance in the Dolan Springs vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is here and do you wish to speak? Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the commissioners have any questions of this applicant. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 11, staff report by Peggy Clements.
Item number 11 is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from a general commercial land use designation to a rural development area land use designation and a rezone from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 20A agricultural residential 20-acre minimum lot size zone for Assessor's Parcel Number 20723065 to allow for a minor land division in the Yucca vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask, is the applicant present and do you wish to speak? Thank you. No one has filled out a request, so I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the commissioners have any questions. Then I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve the item with the staff recommendation.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Martin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 12, staff report, Peggy Clements.
Item number 12 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 20443024 from an AR 16A agricultural residential 16-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 5A agricultural residential 5-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Cedar Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is present and wishes to speak. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and ask if the, any commissioners have any questions. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Alexander, seconded by Commissioner Martin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item number 13, staff report by Amy Patsy.
Item number 13 is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to Board of Supervisors Resolution 2023-015 for Assessor's Parcel Number 31004043C and 043D to amend the proposed zoning from an AR 4A agricultural residential 4-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 3A agricultural residential 3-acre minimum lot size zone to bring the properties into compliance in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval of this amendment.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is present and do you wish to speak?
I am here, no questions.
I have no one from the audience who's asked to speak, so I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the commissioners have any questions. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve for staff recommendation.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Martin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Item number 14, this is to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the calendar year of 2024. We've all gotten a copy of it, so we need to approve it. Again, it's the second Wednesday of every month.
Motion to approve the Cal, Commissioners' meetings for calendar year 2024.
Do I have a second?
Second to motion.
Did you second?
I did.
Okay. I have a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission 2024 meeting calendar. Motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Alexander. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It says, does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time?
I do.
Commissioner Martin.
This is for staff. On the zoning notices, and I know we've asked this in the past, when you send out the notice, is it from corner to corner of the property?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Martin, that is correct. So when we send out a notice, if there's a rezone or a special use permit for a specific parcel, we will do a 300-foot buffer from the actual property line itself. So yeah, every corner, we would extend that 300 feet all the way out, and any property that it touches, doesn't matter if there's a house or anything, we will notify the owner of that property within 300 feet.
Thank you. Is there any further business that the commissioners want to bring to this meeting?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just, if I may, just a reminder, December, we like to have a commissioner training right after our commission meeting, and we will have more details about that coming soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lunch?
No, just training.
Just training.
More details, more details will come soon.
Okay, having no further business to come before this meeting, I declare this meeting adjourned. Call to the public. So...
We'd have to reconvene the meeting.
There's no public.
There is no public.
Is anybody here with a call to the public?
Anyone in the audience, anyone at all?
No, there is. Is there a legal reason that we have to?
Well, if you adjourn the meeting, you have to reconvene the meeting to the...
Okay. I reconvene the meeting to call for the public, for the call to the public. Hearing none, I adjourn the meeting. Sorry about that. Well, how, see, this is...